So, good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the NACADOTCHIS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. The quorum of following board members is present. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lee Bethat.
Here.
Reverend James Irvin.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Dr. TC Gromen.
Here.
And Mr. Farshid Naraman.
Here.
Thank you. We thank you for joining us tonight. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication with members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who follow the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide public comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meetings will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the explicit practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties and ask for your patience. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. The first item on tonight's agenda is to conduct an executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:03 PM. The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:02 PM. I will ask Dr. Gromen if he would sign our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for hearing our prayers. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. Teach us to pray as little children. Heal us, God. And we ask that we might have unity with you for your honor. And, God, we pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Next item is our superintendent announcements. Dr. Trujillo.
President Finch and board, excited to get you some great information. You might remember back in October that NACADOTCHIS high school sophomore Aiden Fennerud was named Regional First Chair in Jazz Band. A great feat for Aiden. Now, Aiden, who's a member of the Golden Dragon Marching Band under the direction of Jacob Williams, has been named an All-State Musician by the Texas Music Educators Association after going through a competitive process that began last fall, including the district, region, and area levels. Allstate is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. More than 50,000 music students from around the state entered the audition process, and 1,860 were selected for the 2021. What a wonderful accomplishment for Aiden, and I wanted to say we are all proud of the work that he's done. But also, we know that he didn't do it alone. His parents are getting him from here to there and everything else. So, we want to congratulate Aiden and his family for this tremendous feat that he has been able to do. The other thing is, there's some more music news. Antonio Ojeda received the 2021 National Young Arts Foundation Award last month in classical music, the piano. Antonio is a junior at the NACADOTCHIS high school and was recognized as a merit level in the organization's third highest honor. Antonio is spectacular on the piano, and we congratulate him for this prize. Great job to Antonio. We want to also communicate that NISD is now offering the COVID-19 rapid test to our students and symptomatic students and staff. Our nurses are doing a wonderful job implementing this program, and I want to thank the district nurses and our supervisor Kelly Poole for her leadership with this great team. The test takes about 15 minutes to complete. Although much of the time is waiting for the results from the cotton swab used to obtain the sample from each nostril, we've also started our drive-up testing program after hours. This is for students and staff only that develop symptoms at home and don't come to, they don't come in to work or to school. The drive-up testing is 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Monday and Thursdays, at NISD Student Support Services. The address is 421 North Perdonia Street. Very exciting to provide this, and our very own nurses have been trained to provide this as a service to our staff and for our students. This is really, really, all of these are great information, but I want to also point the camera at the seven individuals that we have. January is School Board Appreciation Month in the state of Texas, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our own Board of Trustees, the seven board members that are there. The challenge involved in providing an excellent education experience for the many and varied students in the public school district is a challenge that requires dedication, creativity, innovativeness, and the best of times. The year 2020 was not the best of times, but I'm going to tell you, these seven board members have made it their priority to see what we can do and to challenge myself as their superintendent to do what we can at the very best for our students and our staff. The past year required an unusual combination of skills and talents from these leaders. Unexpected circumstances arising from this worldwide pandemic resulting in changes in laws and regulations, and those changes required for them to be adaptable and problem-solving at the district level by administrators and the board members. And just when we figured it out, these seven folks here can shift it on a dime whenever we needed to, and we know that happened a few times, that we had to shift. And so, we congratulate our board members. Our school board members are volunteers who show their critical responsibilities and often make difficult choices for our district, all without pay. All without pay. But I'm going to tell you, the biggest pay they get is the big smiles that they have in the hearts of our kids and teachers for the work that they have, and that is payment enough. And I know these board members that that's all that it takes, is how does it help our teachers and our students? And that's, you can't measure that in payment for seven board members. Their goal is to always focus on the future success of our children in the district. Celebrating the School Board Recognition Month is one way to say thank you for all they do. In previous years, we would have items here to mark this occasion, banners, they would be things that would be all through the room. But if you look at your screens, you're looking at seven board members that are practicing social distance and keeping safe so they can help make the decisions that we have for our campus. However, a campus has a variety of video clip that we'll now share in this Zoom meeting that provide our students and staff with a chance to say, "We thank you."
All right. Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. Board President, Board Members. The campuses did an outstanding job pulling all this together. They've just done a wonderful job. I'm so grateful for their work on this. Now, unfortunately, the video is going to lose just a bit of quality while streaming over Zoom, but tomorrow morning, I'll be sending this to you as well. But now, give me a moment to share my screen, and we've got about two and a half to three minutes of NISD campus students and staff thanking you for the hard work that you do.
NACADOTCHIS ISD Board of Trustees.
Thank you for helping us become
Responsible and productive citizens.
Critical thinkers.
Proper servants.
And effective community caterers.
Leah.
Thank you, Pam Fitch.
Mindy Winslow.
James Montoya.
Reverend James Irvin.
Thank you, Farshid Naraman.
Thank you, Darrell.
Dr. Terrell Gromen.
Thank you, School Board members.
Thank you, Board members, for the great technology.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo and School Board, all members of School Board. We appreciate all that you do, putting students first and including your teachers in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
The NACADOTCHIS ISD School Board. We want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
The NACADOTCHIS ISD School Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, NISD School Board.
Thank you, NISD School Board.
Thank you, NISD School Board.
Thank you, NISD School Board, for all that you do.
Thank you, NISD School Board, for all that you do.
But they did a great job on that. They put in a lot of effort and a lot of time on that, and I am grateful. But thank you all for the work you do.
Thank you. That was a very touching video. I also want to thank the student council. We've got cards here, everybody, from the student council. And then, I mean, this doesn't make you smile. I bet y'all can see this. It's big enough there. And this is, this is from the Plant Services. And everybody, if you can see there, everybody signed it. So, and I know those guys are working super hard, as everyone else is right now. So, thank you all so much.
I'd like to say something. Dr. Trujillo, you made a comment that we don't get paid for this job, and I have to tell you, I get paid every day when I know that teachers and students are doing their best with this pandemic to get educated and to support each other. And the staff at NISD has been doing some amazing things to get these kids educated. So, me personally, I get paid every day because of what you guys do with our kids in our district, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for being able to even be on this board. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else have comments? All right. That video was very touching. I think I got a few little tears in my eyes. The students, incredible. Thank you all.
And also thank those who organized it as well. Those teachers felt the same way.
Yes, absolutely. The next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for the Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER, as we know it. After the presentation, viewers of this meeting will have the opportunity to comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes and must pertain to the TAPER public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on the TAPER can use the chat feature in Zoom to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name in the request and ask to comment on the TAPER. Those wishing to comment will be taken in order of their request. Presenting the report tonight, Dr. Dan Hill.
Good afternoon, or excuse me, good evening, President Fitch, Board Members and Superintendent Trujillo. If you'll bear with me just a moment, I need to allow Zoom to access my computer, and I didn't realize I was going to have to do that this evening, so I apologize. So, I may need to switch computers very quickly. This is not good. Bear with me just a moment. So, Mr. Lombard, what I might do very quickly to save some time is just forward you this PowerPoint, if I may, and then may we just use your screen?
Yes, absolutely.
Time, so I sincerely apologize. Bear with me, please. Mr. Lombard, of course, it's the one that's the, has the P for presentation or PowerPoint.
Okay, it's not popped in yet.
Did she get it?
Uh-uh.
Try to share again. Mr. Lombard, do you want me to try it and see if I can do it?
Please try if you can.
Maybe that top.
All right, we can see it. Got it.
Okay. I am so very sorry. Thank you to Ms. Morris for the technical assistance, right? You just can't beat that type of customer service. So, I apologize for that. So, good evening, and thank you, and thank you for that wonderful video, and I'm sorry that I have to follow that because that's definitely a hard act to follow, and I did tear up as well. So, if my nose starts running, I'll have to get my little tissue. But thanks for providing me the opportunity to go through this annual report based on our TAPER. I did want to let everybody know that this information has been posted on our website. I know the presentation says it will be posted within two weeks of this public hearing, but it's already been posted. We did also send it out with the link announcing this board meeting so that anybody from the public would be able to see the report in its entirety, not just the board. So, if there are specific comments at the end of the report, we will gladly take them. With this being an annual report, we're kind of accustomed to kind of, you know, looking at the information. So, I just kind of briefly wanted to go over the seven sections that we're going to talk about in brief this evening, and of course, if there are follow-up presentations or questions or thoughts that we need to cover at a later date, please let us know. So, the first section is, of course, the TAPER. That's probably the most robust of sections because it covers just a multitude of data. Then, our second one is our PIMS Financial Standard Report, which this is information we've heard previously because this report is always about a year behind, and you'll see on our Financial Standard Report, it's from the 2018-19 school year. And so, Ms. Barbrick does an excellent job. We're always have a superior first rating, so we're very, very pleased with that. Section number three is when you get into the district accreditation status. Four is the campus performance objectives, which are from the campus and district improvement plans, which we typically approve annually, typically at the September Board of Trustees meeting. Section five is our report on violent or criminal incidences on campuses. So, we have that report for you this evening. Section six is the student performance in post-secondary institutions, so it just gives us an update on our graduates and where they've gone to after they've left us. And then, of course, lastly, it's always that we provide the TAPER glossary because there may be some acronyms in this report and/or the specific TAPER that you may have additional questions about. So, as we move to section one, again, there's going to be several slides on section one just because, or section, yeah, section one, just simply because it covers just a multitude of data. So, when we're looking at this, the TAPER is compiled by TEA for every district. It takes the data from our PIMS as well as our student assessment data. It's published on the website in two different ways. You've got a comprehensive dynamic online version, or there's also a PDF version, and that's pretty much what you have in your board book this evening, is all of the TAPERS for the district as well as for the campuses. As you continue on and kind of get acclimated to the TAPER, you begin by the cover sheet, and on the cover sheet, it lists, you know, several different things. Usually, we have our accountability rating. You'll note that for this particular year, last year, it's data that we're looking at for last year, all districts across the state of Texas due to the pandemic, COVID-19, everyone will have a not-rated, declared state of disaster. Then, as we move into the next item that you'll see on the cover page, it's the Special Education Determination Status, which is needs intervention, and then for 2020 due to COVID and us not testing for STAR, there were no distinction designations that were awarded to campuses and/or districts across the state. Continuing on with section one, this is where we really get into the nitty-gritty of the STAR performance for each of our assessments, as well as like academic growth. Just a kind reminder that there are three different performance rates. I know we really went through those last Friday in our agenda review, looking at our board goals because those are set at the meets, but just as a friendly reminder that there are three different performance rates, excuse me, that we look at. One thing that, again, I do want to note is due to the cancellation of the Spring 2020 STAR assessments, the data for these measures have not been updated. So, the data that we're reporting on this evening or that is contained in the TAPER is from the 2018-19 school year. And so, we've done a pretty extensive presentation, I believe, in August of 2019 over those particular data pieces. As we're moving on through just the format of TAPER, it continues on and has various sections, including the STAR prior year and student success, our program-specific students and how they're doing, specifically the bilingual or ESL, as well as our STAR participation rate. And again, just as a kind reminder, in the turquoise scroll there is that due to the cancellation of STAR, this data is kind of old data. Then, we get in past the STAR performance data, and we start looking at the attendance and graduation dropout rates. We also start looking at a graduation profile. This data, however, was updated because when you look at the TAPER, they do a comparison of a couple of years, and so you'll see that they've added, this is, it's going to look at 2018 and compare it to 2018-19. Then, continuing on, you've got your college and career military readiness component, CCMR-related indicators, as well as some other post-secondary indicators. Then, we get into just our student enrollment, and of course, it breaks it down by grade level, ethnicity, identification indicators, students with disabilities, retention rates, class size information. So, it's a really good snapshot of the district as well as each campus. It even goes further and breaks it down into staff information, gender, teacher's highest degree level held, experience, staff salary, teacher turnover rate, which is always something that we pay particular attention to. And then, there's very specific program information, like our enrollment by program, which would be CTE, gifted and talented, special education, ESL bilingual. So, once we go through, once we have gotten through the TAPER reports, because again, they're super large, we get into section two, which is Ms. Barbrick's wheelhouse. And so, one of the requirements of this report is to specifically note the statement that you see at the very bottom of the screen. And this year, last year, I stated it, but this year, I wanted it in kind of black and white so that everybody would see it. So, I'll take a moment and read it, so bear with me. The encumbered surplus fund balance as of the last day of the preceding fiscal year was $22,788,487, which represents a less than 1% on the preceding year budget for 1819. This amount is 39% of the district's general fund total budgeted expenditures of $57,83,461. As we move on to section three, very important slide is looking at our accreditation status. We are accredited, so that is always nice. You'll see that kind of emboldened in all caps on that last sentence, so that is always nice for us to hear. As we move on to campus performance objectives, just as a friendly reminder, these are the performance objectives that are noted in the campus and district improvement plans that we presented and you guys approved back in, I believe it was in September of '20. I think it's important to note here in this third bullet that each campus, as well as the district, periodically measures, we call them formative assessments, of our strategies, meeting our goals to see how we're doing and how we're faring. So, it may do that with their site-based committee, and we do that with our district advisory committee. As we move on to section five, this is our report on violent and criminal incidences, and you'll see that it is a specific requirement that report this or that we publish it as part of our Texas Education Code, Section 39.306. The next three bullets just talk to you about the specifics that must be included. This information is something that we pulled directly from PIMS. You'll note, as well as on the website, and I'll show you exactly on the website where these are, but these are noted in your board book. I believe it's on page 467 of your board book. So just a report, we had six incidences at Regay, and we had seven incidences at Nacogdoches High School. And so on that report, you'll be able to see specifically what those six incidences were as well as the seven at Nacogdoches High School. As we move on to the student performance in post-secondary institutions, this is the next document. It's on page 468 of your board book. One thing to note, or a couple of things to note, actually, is that out of the graduations, graduates that they looked at on this particular report, there were 345 total grads from Nacogdoches High School. Eighty-three of those students from NHS attended a four-year public university, while 73 went on to a two-year university. You also note on that report, the last couple of bullets where it does talk about student GPAs as well. Pretty impressive information. And then lastly, because the taper is so extensive, they do recommend that we go ahead and post the taper glossary in both English and Spanish so that if there are any unfamiliar words or items in the document that you may be unfamiliar with, you can go and get a fairly good, reasonable definition. And then the last slide on this particular presentation is, as I stated earlier, and as a reminder, all of this information has been posted on the website. I know this says within 10 weeks, two weeks, but it's already been posted. It was sent out previously so that everyone who wanted to make a public comment tonight about the annual report could do so. Paper copies and/or notebooks have already been sent to the campuses, so those will be easily accessible for parents to go to the front office to ask for that, as well as copies here. And then if you or anybody needs additional assistance or questions, then call myself or Dr. Corley, and we will be more than happy to sit down and go through any of this information with you because I know it's fairly comprehensive. So at this time, this concludes the presentation. I will stop sharing my screen at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your presentation tonight. At this time, anyone wishing to comment on the taper public hearing can use the chat feature in Zoom to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name and request to comment on the taper. Mr. Limebarker, do we have any requests?
No, ma'am. There are no requests to speak.
Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. That'll take us to the next item on our agenda.
I can't hear anyone. Oh, there we are. Okay.
I'll try to be loud here. I wanted to make a few observations here, realizing that we're a year behind. Although I would be very eager to see some sort of report maybe next month as to our end-of-semester status. So I know we don't have the official STAR things going on, but surely we could get some sort of read on how our students are doing, particularly because in our elementary classes, we're not doing well. We keep dropping. And I bet, I'm willing to bet that our 2019-2020 data would have just continued to show even more of a decline, which is, I know you're looking into it and trying to figure out what needs to happen. I was alarmed at a little bit of dropping with some of the elementary. I noticed that our very low scores for third grade in reading and math, you know, that we, we, I think it was Friday, as recently as Friday, that I commented that I wanted teachers to know that we are aware that they are not satisfied even with what the state is wanting. But it was interesting to note that from fourth grade on, we see a steady improvement in percentages. And so knowing brain study and all of that, we can kind of take into account the fact that not every third grader is quite ready to embrace reading at a grade level. I realize that. And yet, some of the drops from 2018 to 2019 were a little bit alarming, particularly our blue ribbon school, Nettie Marshall. It's on page 166. And this, these were big, big drops in every, at every grade, just about. And I'm assuming that we're looking into what was going on in that, those two years, 2018, 2019, which could have an effect. But also this data on how many of our teachers are beginner teachers? We're close to half. Half of our teachers have less than five years' experience. And I'm telling you, that is a key, key reason for why we have such low scores. We really depend on mentoring. I mean, we can do so much teacher training, but mentoring is very, very important. But if we have nearly half of the teachers who aren't even experienced enough to mentor, and we've lost a lot of our veteran teachers from into the other districts, or they've retired, you know, I say, let's find their phone number, call them up, and ask them to come and do special workshops or something. Because brand-new teachers coming in, they have the degree. And I know you have to start somewhere. But it takes experience to know the various ways to approach the different children to help them find that little niche that's going to turn the light bulb on and help them learn to read or to improve in their reading. I just want to encourage you at DSC to look into these and be innovative. Let's be out of the box. Let's think out of the box here on how we can get our teachers prepared. And let's be willing to, especially third grade and younger, to have smaller classrooms so that these teachers who are trying to handle students who aren't even reading yet, and so they're not even to a point where you can improve on their education, they have fewer to try to address their needs. We know, we all know here that the key to learning is a personal relationship that a teacher has with that student. It's not a magic material. It's not magic curriculum. It's none of that. And so we need to help our teachers have the opportunity not to be so overloaded that they are, you know, trying to get too many levels and too many students. And then I know that with COVID, we had to throw distance learning into the mix as well. But anyway, these were just some observations that I noted, and I was particularly alarmed. But I think that the fact that we have nearly half of our teachers with such small amount of experience addresses a lot of this problem.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Abt.
Any additional thoughts or comments?
I realize that some of the four-year college, after-high school graduation, and some two-years college, and I was wondering, did we have a statistic for those who joined the military as well?
Yeah, I think it's on there.
It is?
She just didn't say. Yeah, I think I saw that.
It's there, ma'am. We'll find it.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Abt for that remark because I have personal experience with her knowing how to teach. Two of my children learned differently and developed in that relationship. It was key. I had a child come in and not being able to write a paper and leave him being able to write one. And she had a personal experience with her. So she, you know, I lived it. So I know, you know what you're talking about from that, and I agree with that, Ms. Abt.
I also want to say I'm really thrilled, and I think we would be doing this even if the state wasn't making this. But I'm thrilled with our, our effort now to improve how many certificates we offer our high school graduates beyond going to secondary school or military. I think that addresses a true and genuine need we have in our society.
Any other comments?
I'll say something. I think Chief Murray has a lot of kudos and all the people under her. We have a very good safety record. And that doesn't happen accidentally. Everybody made that happen. And we appreciate the safety that that's brought to our students and our teachers and every worker that we have. Thank you so much.
All right. Any additional comments? All right. Hearing none, we will move to the next item on our agenda, a public comment. We did not receive any requests to address the board today as outlined in the meeting notes. So that will take us to item six, consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there's a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, and it will be set aside for further discussion and separate vote.
Madam President, I'd like H to be set aside.
Anyone else have an item they would like to set aside?
Is that H you said?
H, the warranty, premium warranty.
Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Righto, President. I move the board approve the December 2020 consent agenda.
With the exception of item H? Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? We have a motion by Mr. Niermond and a second by Mrs. Winslow. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now here have separate discussion on item 6H, consideration of purchase of premium warranty for Chromebooks. And I will yield the floor to Mrs. Abt.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, are you there? I apologize that we're having to do this, but I don't know. Friday, I was just not really thinking clearly. I felt too rushed in my preparation, did not prepare well, and made a lot of assumptions. And so when I went back and listened to our meeting, there, I just had a few questions, and I feel sure that you'll be able to answer them for me. But first of all, I'm assuming, although I looked and looked and looked and couldn't find the meeting where we approved the purchase of that 3,400-plus Chromebooks in the first place, I was looking for it to know exactly what kind of warranty came with those books in the first place. Am I to assume correctly that it's just a manufacturer's warranty?
Yes, ma'am. You're correct. It is a one-year manufacturer's warranty for those Chromebooks.
So all of those that we're considering a more premium warranty for, they do have the factory warranty on them, right?
Yes, ma'am. A one-year factory warranty.
Okay, so what suddenly began to really gnaw at me was this nearly quarter of a million dollars we're going to be paying for accidental warranty. And I would just kind of like to know your thoughts on why you're wanting us to make this decision now and maybe not wait. Mr. Niermond asked this, but it really wasn't answered, at least not to my satisfaction, why we're not waiting until the fall? I mean, we're going to be taking them up soon. And what is your, what are your thoughts here? What's motivating this rush?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be delighted to try to clarify and answer your questions. So much like we purchase our devices at home, our Apple devices, such as iPad or either a Apple phone, the manufacturer or the company that we purchased them from offers you an extended warranty at the time. That extended warranty is only extended to you for a certain period of time. In this case, the vendor extended the warranty. Normally, it would be a 30-day period. This offer that's on the table now for the district, for the board to consider tonight, would expire in 60 days. And that's because it is, you've got, we, right now, the devices are fairly new. We put them in the hands of our students in December before we left for the Christmas break. What would happen is the warranty companies, the price starts to go up, and they take that warranty, the extended warranty or premium warranty off the table as time goes by because now they know that those devices are in the hands of kids, and they're no longer considered brand-new. So the move or the request to, for the board to approve an extended warranty, we're coming up against the 60-day period of the time that we've had them in our possession. So when they change possession from the manufacturer to the district, we issue them out to students, we're on the clock. And so we're making this request that the board consider approving this premium warranty. Why do we need the premium warranty? We're trying to perhaps take a little bit of the burden off of our parents and make them feel safer and better about the kids bringing home an electronic device to take care of. It helps our, it helps us to make sure that we have devices ready to go and ready for the kids to use without having the worry of replacing that device totally. So it's a quick turnaround with regards to if a screen is broke, if keys fall off. If, and it also covers things such as water damage, accidental damage, drops, fall collisions, cracked screens, liquid damage, biohazard damage, or other damage resulting from the accident that impacts the functionality of the device. So I hope I answered your question in some of that.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this the white glove? Is it called white glove premium warranty? Is that what the white glove? Is this premium warranty going to repair like a cracked screen? Or is this a replacement?
It's going to repair up until a point that the manufacturer or the warranty company determines that the device is not repairable, and then they will replace it with an equal, equal value machine.
And then, and I think this is my last question. Do we have some sort of procedure? What are we telling parent? I remember back in the olden days when we had, you know, that we wouldn't let a student get their report card or get their diploma if they didn't pay their fines and turn their books back in. So do we have some sort of, in other words, do parents feel like they are responsible at least to some degree? Otherwise, we've got, you know, a borrowed horse has no soul kind of idea here where they be careful with. I'm thinking of those cracked screens on iPads and thinking, well, what did we expect when we're giving it to second graders and younger? You know, they're going to sit on it or whatever. We need, we need some incentive. I know we don't want to make parents feel a burden, but they need to have some to make that child value the fact that this is an expensive device here. So what do we have in place?
Yes, ma'am. Each parent has to sign an agreement for the devices that are checked out to the students. So they sign an agreement, and in that agreement, it talks about the safety of, you know, practicing safe habits with the device, taking care of the device. It speaks to the expectations of the student of taking care of the device, bringing it to school every day, charging it, making sure it's charged. bringing it to school every day, charging it, making sure it's charged. As one of those, as a parent of two kids who are in our school system, who came home with two of those devices, uh, I can tell you from experience that I, I understand, uh, your, your potential concern about taking care of those devices or kids taking care of those devices. But, uh, you would be surprised at how they value those devices, uh, very much. And they grew up with these things in their hands. Uh, whereas I, uh, you know, I'm still learning, uh, how to use certain, certain parts of them. But, uh, yes, we do have measures in place. We do have guidelines. We do have agreements with the parents, uh, who have these devices issued to their, their kids.
So the way I looked at this, uh, this, what we're paying is approximately $60 to $60 per machine. Is that correct for three years?
$67, I believe, Dr. Gorman, for three years, yes, sir. Per machine.
We're paying about $22 a year to insure these for everything. A cracked screen on a Chromebook or iPad is between $50 and $100?
Uh, yes, sir. In fact, the, the cracked screen repair cost is about $50, yes, sir.
New chargers when they're lost, new cases, all of that, they're all covered, right? Everything that's, that's with them, that's covered under the insurance. Like if they, if they lose their charger, they get another one?
It's for Morris, let me defer to you on that particular question.
And no, if they lose their, their charger, then that's different than it being a broken charger. Now, if the charger's overheating, you know, part of that, then yes, they'll evaluate that and they could possibly potentially give us money for that.
What about if they lose their iPad, is that replaced?
And what was that, I'm sorry?
They lose the iPad, if it's lost or stolen, what happens then?
Um, we're able to track all of our devices. So eventually, um, right now, it's the devices that we have lost. Um, they've ended up being in the child's room or at the school. Um, so they've been able to find it. We haven't really had any, because right now they're pretty locked down to where, especially on a Chromebook, the only person that can log in is anyone with a student account. Um, so, but both iPads and Chromebooks were able to, um, to track, to see where they're at and who's using them and who's logged in.
Yeah, I recall when they were purchasing, I questioned if there's a GPS on it or not, they indicate this to you. Dr. Gorman, you say $67 or $70? Uh, $67 for the period? You know, almost. I, I. Four thousand, that won't go bad.
Well, it's just like any insurance. If you do it, you win. And if you don't, you win.
Yes, sir.
Are the, every one of those, uh, devices have a serial number, right?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay. If somebody's, their own person, uh, goes bad and wants to go through this insurance procedure, they're not operating on that, correct? Because they go with serial numbers that they sold, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. These, these particular Chromebooks and iPads came, uh, if you recall, were purchased through the Texas, uh, Connect, Operation Connectivity, uh, basically a grant that the board graciously approved, uh, back, back, I want to say in August. Uh, each one of these came with an inventory sticker. So they're, they're inventoried everywhere from TEA to Dale, to NACAD, to SISD, uh, to the premium warranty company. So they're, they all have a unique serial number and you cannot use a home device and you try to, to use the warranty with regards to, uh, these, these devices.
Okay, one more, uh, question or comment. So when we look at this number of, uh, Chromebooks, we're going to purchase them at cost as, like, I want to go by however many numbers this is. How, how many millions of dollars does this worth that we're insuring with this money? Add up the price of these that we're, we're buying insurance for, how much do they really cost? Not what we paid, not the discount we got, but the total cost, what, what are we insuring?
I believe it was a little over $1.5 million.
I'll be correct.
Right, I mean, I, so I'll just thank you for your time and I'm sorry, I, I just, I do feel better. I'm just thinking in terms of why now, let's say we've got 100 turned in that are broken or damaged and we have to pay a full amount because we don't have this premium warranty. It seemed to me like we would be coming out ahead if we put this off and drew interest on a quarter million dollars for another six months. But, um, I should have known that insurance, they're always playing the odds and, and that it will, we'll never get this bit of a deal on it. I'm telling how much.
As for your information, if you put the $200,000 in one of the local bank,
Yeah.
$24 in the year.
No, Ms. App, I appreciate your, your questions. Uh, it is an insurance, uh, deal and it is a, a time factor that plays into, you know, how long you've had the, the device before your, your time expires. Uh, if you, you've bought an iPad or iPhone, um, they actually put a, a time expiration on your device when you buy it. And it, it says on there, you know, you have 30 days before your Apple Care, uh, offer ends and it counts down every day. Similar situation here, the, the vendor is saying basically that, uh, you know, um, 30 days, uh, from the transfer of the ownership of the device is basically usually when, uh, the time period you would have to purchase an extended warranty. And but because this particular time, we, uh, purchased in a bulk purchase and did not know when we would be taking receipt of these devices, they extended it, extended the offer of an extended warranty out to 60 days for us. And we are coming up on that 60-day threshold to either purchase the warranty, which administration recommends that we do, or, um, we will be, uh, having potentially a lot of repairs with, and so have to set aside a lot of, uh, money to do so.
Like that, you take them to buy a used car and you don't get that extra. And then, yeah, and then 90 days later. Yeah. That's how, that's kind of how I saw it when I looked at it.
Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, madam, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we, do we include this in our other?
That we have separate motion?
Yes.
A move that we go ahead and purchase a premium warranty for the Chromebooks as outlined by Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Niermond. Second by Mrs. App. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much. That'll take us to item seven, our discussion action agenda. Item A is student outcome goals and monitoring calendar. Dr. Trivia. Can you hear us, Dr. Trivia?
You can't hear us?
Dr. Triga, I think you're muted.
Dr. Triga, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
I'm sorry, I did not hear, uh, where we are at.
Uh, we just moved to action item A, student outcome goals and monitoring calendar. I know we heard a presentation on that Friday. Did you have any, did you have any additional comments at this time?
No, ma'am, no additional comments.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Again, the movement, Madam President, the board approved the student outcome goals and monitoring calendar as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Niermond. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
A second by Dr. Gorman. Any questions or additional discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That'll take us to item 7B, consideration of bids for Mike Moses HVAC and re-roof bond project. Mr. Martin, I believe you said we would have some more detail in our packet today, correct?
Yes, ma'am, President Fitch, members of the board. If I may, uh, direct your attention to page 770 of your board book. On page, uh, 771, on, uh, 771, you will see that on, uh, Thursday, January the 14th, 2021, the district received seven bids for the, uh, bid for the Mike Moses HVAC replacement. Uh, the bids are listed on page 771. You, on page 772, you will also see a letter from, uh, architect, Mr. Armey Curtis. After a review of all the bids, the bid that came in the lowest that met all of the requirements, uh, of the project was for Cox Contractors for $1,018,295. The controls for this project would be, uh, would cost $250,000 and the architect and engineering fees would cost $91,000, totaling $1,359,295 for the, for this total project at Mike Moses. We'll be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
This, Dr. Gorman, just like we talked in the review, uh, this Cox is a local company, use local workers and all this money gets put back into our local economy. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Wonderful. Thank you for the Cox and, uh, Mr. Curtis for, uh, making a, a worthy bid and we're happy to have them, uh, do further work for us, uh, depending on the will of the board.
Thank you, sir.
I have a, uh, just a question to make sure I'm kind of, kind of following along correctly here. A couple of months ago, I believe, Ms. Barbara made a, a presentation to us and shared a spreadsheet with us, um, on the bond projects. Ms. Barbara, this, this project we're considering right now, uh, 7B. Uh, if I'm looking at that spreadsheet you shared with us that night in that meeting, is this basically, um, and I know it may take you a second to pull that. There's an item on that spreadsheet called Mike Moses Roof Priority Maintenance and it's 1.6 million. Is that the line that's being funded here or is there more to be included in?
It is that line primarily. There's also a, um, Moses HVAC line. And I believe they are using both of those lines with this one, uh, combining these projects.
Classroom HVAC, a Mike Moses gyms HVAC, and then the Mike Moses roof. Are those three lines being combined into this?
One of those projects, and I can't remember if it's classroom or the gym, I believe it was gym, is completed, but the other two are being combined.
Okay. Mr. Mr. LaRue, are you with us? Can you, can you tell me which one of those lines?
Not letting me unmute.
I'm going to jump in if you don't mind, Ms. Fitch.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
The, uh, the, the two lines that are being taken care of under this is the HVAC gyms and band and the roof replacement. The HVAC classroom has been completed last summer.
We had a little surplus from that classroom project.
Okay. Okay, I see, because she's actually got that marked as C as completed. Okay, I'm, I'm understanding her, her stuff there now, okay. So, so that, Ralph, you might help me here then. The, the line right under this says gym. Does the gym include the band as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got both of those two line items combining.
Yeah.
For the total project cost. And on this situation, the total project cost is not going to exceed that amount we see here, which is 1.359 and some change, correct?
Change, correct.
Okay. I'm, and, and thank you for your patience. I just want to make sure that, that I'm, I'm following, following along with your accounting and, and everything correctly.
No, we, we won't.
So that's 236, I'll mark that one out. Any additional questions?
I just appreciate y'all breaking out the extra things that we were going to have to put in there because it, it makes it look much more complete, having the full amount on there instead of just the one, the 1 million. It is actually the 1.3.
Yes. And I'd like to just, uh, remind everybody that there's yet another line for Mike Moses, which is the conversion from middle to elementary. So that, that'll be the following summer.
Good. Yes, I see that on here a, as well. So that's, I'm assuming that's the one that's just coded to Moses renovation.
Right, and, and we kind of treat this as all, we kind of add all of Mike Moses into one big number and we'll just keep whittling away at that number and, and that way we'll be able to finish everything up.
Thank y'all for the, for the work you're putting in on that. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Madam President, this is, I should never run again. I move that administration, that the recommendation to review proposal and approve pops, uh, pops contractors to be primary contractor on a Mike Moses HVAC and roof replacement with a total of project cost $1,359,295.
Thank you, Mr. Niermond. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Niermond. Any additional, uh, discussion or questions? I know the public can't see this, I'm, I'm counting, we had seven, total of seven bids. They're so delighted that a, a local contractor, as Dr. Gorman mentioned, came in and offered such a competitive bid. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you so much. That's going to take us to our next item, the consideration of bids for Fredonia Elementary School Drive Bond Project. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, President Fitch, board, Dr. Triga. Uh, similarly, bids were open on Thursday, January 14th, 2021, uh, for the Fredonia Elementary New Drive. This, again, if I may, uh, direct your attention to page 773 in your board book, uh, you'll see that, uh, the district received four bids on page 774. And also another recommendation letter from, uh, Mr. Curtis from my Curtis Architecture, recommending, uh, we recommend, uh, administration recommending that the board approve, uh, Wheaton LLC to be the primary contractor for the Fredonia Elementary New Drive project for a total project cost of $619,154.64. for a total project cost of $619,154.64, 65 cents, excuse me. We'll be happy to entertain any questions the board may have. Board, if you also will take a look at the total project cost on page 775, and Mr. Curtis's letter, Drury and Wheaton LLC's bid was $546,154.65. Architects and engineers' fees were $33,000, and owner contingency for this project is $40,000 to come to that total of $619,154.65.
I'm a little confused because under this, the tabulation of bid, it shows $546,154.65, but the total can be $619,000.
Yes, sir, Mr. Montoya, that's, that, that number is just for the contractor, and then we have architect and engineering fees as well as some contingency built into this project.
Thank you.
We just kind of absent to go ahead and include all those extras so we could see the total amount hidden. That's why it looks that way.
I'm good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, this is Farshid Nirmann. I move the board approved the Drury Wheaton LLC to be primary contractor on the Fredonia Elementary New Drive project with a total project cost of $619,154.5.
Thank you, Mr. Nirmann. Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya, with our second. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Barbara, if I may, with the, with these bids that we approved tonight, would you update our spreadsheet on our bond projects and email that out to the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. That takes us to item eight. Do I hear a motion?
Mrs. Minkley, I may adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second? Do we have a second, Rev?
Do a second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much for your time tonight. Reverend, I hope you feel better very soon, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night. Our best to Deborah and Nate.